The regularly scheduled meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council with the Town of Southern Shores for November the 6th, 2013 is in session. I invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's all join together in a moment of silence in honor of all the men and women of our country who are serving us around the world in defense of the freedoms that we enjoy so much. Join me in a moment of silence. Counsel, what is your pleasure on the agenda? I would say that at a call from Chief Harvey, and he will not be here for the volunteer fire department report. What's your pleasure?
I approve the agenda as corrected.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Mr. Manager, I believe you have an introduction to make.
I do, Mr. Mayor, and I may ask of Ms. Patrick to meet me at the podium there, may we? Ms. Mayor, members of the council, it pleases me to introduce the town's new director of its public works department, Rachel Patrick. Rachel comes to us after serving nearly nine years at NC State University where she worked in a facilities management capacity in their capital project management group and the university architects office, where she managed formal building and renovation projects. Most notably, Rachel was the project manager for two projects that are among the largest at NC State to date. The new James B. Hunt Library, a $100 million lead certified silver building that won an AIA Building Award in 2013, and had a design and construction team of 12 different consulting firms. And also Wolf Ridge, a six building, $120 million housing project that will also be a lead certified silver project. Rachel has extensive experience managing various types of building and land development projects, as well as experience with contract administration and procurement. Rachel has a degree in architecture from Florida International University and is a lead accredited professional. We're very fortunate to have Rachel here at the Town of Southern Shores, and she started in her capacity as Director of Public Works on October the 7th. So, welcome Rachel to the town.
Thank you.
I realize that I had an introduction to make, too. Halloween is long past, and Ben Gallup in a mask is not at the table as our town attorney. Ben had business that took him out of town, so we have with us tonight, serving as our town attorney, Mr. Philip Hornthal. Welcome, Philip. Good to have you here. What's your pleasure on the consent agenda, people, that consists of the minutes of our October the 1st meeting? We've all had a crack at these. My suggestions have been incorporated.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It is approved. Town planner, Mr. Wes Haskett.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council have a brief report for you tonight for the month of October. There were 11 zoning permits issued, 27 building permits issued, which consisted of two new single-family dwellings, five additions or alterations, and 18 others. There were 57 building inspections conducted at 43 different job sites. There are currently 13 single-family dwellings under construction in Southern Shores, and the total amount of fees collected in October was $16,033. Also wanted to update you on the comprehensive bicycling pedestrian plan. You remember we did receive a grant, and we are still waiting NC DOT to finish their review and approval of our contract with Alter Greenways, that will be the consultant assisting us in that process. So, once that is approved, we're going to finalize the steering committee, which will assist in the development of the plan. It looks to consist of town staff, as well as citizens and volunteers. So, we hopefully hope that'll get underway late this month or early December, and we'll have more updates as that project progresses. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Police Chief David Cole.
For the month of October 2013, Southern Shores police officers responded to 1,098 calls for service. As you can see on the screen, that's just a breakdown of some of the highlights. They conducted 299 business checks, another 207 residence checks in the month of October. We had 16 mutual aid requests from area police agencies, 59 traffic direct, most of those were at the school, 12 suspicious conditions, officers responded to 11 different alarms, they conducted 83 traffic stops, and another 123 extra patrols. Breakdown of the incidents, we had 30 incidents for the month of October. You see off to the right, some of the highlights, two assaults, we had four breaking and entering, five larcenies, we had six fraud, we had four vandalism, we also had four ABC violations. We made seven arrests, one for larceny, two for the ABC violations, we had two driving while intoxicated arrests, and we made one arrest for a fraud, and the one under all other was a domestic violence related arrest. Officers handed out 35 written citations, they handed out another 36, 35 citations, another 36 warning citations for the month of October, and another six ordinance violations, and we had two motor vehicle accidents. And speaking of Halloween, it was very uneventful, I'm happy to report. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Now, we'll hear from Mr. Sam Williams, the Chair of our planning board. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I have a brief report this evening. At the planning board's October 21st meeting, we reviewed the first conditional use permit that we've had on wireless telecommunications sites since the ordinance was put in place. After hearing the staff report, applicant presentation, public comments, our discussions, and we made a recommendation. On a 4-1 vote, the planning board recommends approval of CUP 1301 with the 13 conditions approved by the planning board. In the materials that was in your package, there were 14, but after it was sent out, we noticed that there was a duplicate, numbers 1 and 11 are duplicates. If you have any questions, I would be pleased to address them during the public hearing.
Thank you for that, sir, and... Civil Association, I don't, do I see Ross Mitchell?
There's no report, sir.
No report? Thank you. Chicock Property Owners Association? Hello, Leo. Councilman-elect Leo Holland.
Hi, Derek. Thank you. We had a sort of a quiet month. We did participate here a couple weeks ago with the Dare Vision program where the two associations were filmed and recorded as to what our associations do in relation to the town. And I understand that DVD/CD has been made and approved, I believe. And the other thing, we've had two incidents reported to us, we haven't been able to see it in action. We've got two people reported ATVs wandering around in the Cypress Pond area. One, I know the police have had a report on it, so I just wanted to make you aware, we've got some apparently people running around town with ATVs and running around. Right now, the reports we've had have been on CPOA common property. So, just want to make you aware of it. If you hear about it, see about it, we need to know about it and involve the police department because I don't believe an ATV is a permitted use vehicle here in town. That's all I have.
Any questions? This is Swain, Bonnie Swain, our finance officer. She'll be talking to Tab 2, council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you, you have the first quarter of this fiscal year, 1314's financials, and basically the revenues and expenditures for the first quarter are a lot of times time and issue, so where you see maybe there was more money spent and less money spent, another time, it's just all according to the timing of when we get the billings and that sort of thing. For instance, we'll start with the revenues. I think that the most noted increase that you can see on the revenue side is going to be in the shared revenues, and that is as a result of our tax rate going from 14 cents to 16 cents in the fiscal year 1213, because remember, there's a year last, so what we are collecting this year is from the 1213 fiscal year. And so, for the first quarter, as compared to the first quarter of this same time, this last fiscal year, the revenues are up by 127,818, and like I said, that's mainly due to the increase in shared revenues. For the expenditures, overall, the expenditures are less for the first quarter of this fiscal year than last year, although you'll see some increases within some of the departments from the month-to-month comparison. Most of that is due to time and issues. For instance, if you'll look in the, let's see, for July, a lot of those differences are the time and issue, like the streets, I mean, we were doing Chickahawke this time last year. The canal was in public works department last year. This year, it's in a fund by itself called Streets, Bridges, and Canals, so that's why that shows that difference. And in August, for instance, we paid our audit in July this year as compared to last year in August, so that's what I mean by the time and issue, it's just a matter of when we get all of the bills and that sort of thing in. But overall, it looks like we are ahead on revenues, and our expenses are less than what they were this time last year. Are there any questions? Thank you.
I don't see any questions, Bonnie. Thank you very much. Sometimes, timing works out just exactly the way you hoped it would. Our auditor, Ms. Teresa Osborne, has been, I think, in Manio this evening, delivering an audit report to the Maniotoam government, and I didn't realize, I didn't believe she could get here at this time, but she just walked in. So, welcome. This is Ms. Teresa Osborne. She is the town auditor, and she is going to report to us on the fiscal year ending June 30th of this year. Welcome, ma'am.
How are y'all doing tonight? I am pleased to be here tonight to present the results of your June 30th, 2013 audited financial statements for the Town of Southern Shores. The town has received an unqualified opinion on its financial statements, which is the best opinion you can receive, and this is outlined on pages 1 and 2 of the financial statements. Additionally, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted, and this is outlined in the internal control report on pages 50 to 51 of the financial statements. The entire audit report is 51 pages long, and I'm not going to go over the entire report with you tonight, otherwise I will take up your entire meeting. So, I am just going to briefly point out a few things to you for the short time I plan to be here. If I could get you guys to look at pages 13 and 14, that's what I'm going to focus on for just a few minutes. It's Exhibits 3 and 4, page 13 and 14. Exhibit 3 is the balance sheet for all of your funds at June 30th, and Exhibit 4 is the statement of revenues and expenditures for all of your funds. The general fund includes your general fund and your capital reserve fund, and then in the middle, you now have what's called a canal capital project fund. That's a result of the loan proceeds that you received in June for your canal dredging project, and then the column that says total non-major fund, that's your cemetery fund. So, just a couple of comments on your general fund. Your ad valorem taxes increased $352,000 last year due to your 2-cent tax increase. Occupancy and land transfer taxes decreased $148,000 due to the new municipal service district tax in a neighboring town in the prior year. There's a one-year delay in how those revenues are shared, and so that's why it took it a year to catch up. Unrestricted intergovernmental revenues were about the same as the prior year, and restricted revenues decreased due to Hurricane Irene in the prior year. There was a 24% increase in building-related revenues. Expenses remained basically the same, except for capital items, debt, and street improvements. And the street improvements differ primarily just to the timing and completion of those On Exhibit 4, you can see that the revenues over expenses were $299,515 in the first column there. It's a little bit difficult to navigate your fund balance because you had street projects in place at the end of 12 and also at the end of 13. So, what I've done is a little bit of a separate schedule for you to kind of give you an analysis of your fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. The first column there shows that your total fund balance of June of 12 was $4,574,049. In total, the fund balance grew $299,515, which is what you see in that middle column, giving you a total fund balance of $4,873,564 at the end of 2013. But if you look at that increase column in the middle, you can see that $183,000 of that $299,000 increase, that went into your capital reserve fund, and $305,000 went into your unassigned fund balance, giving you a total unassigned fund balance at June 30th, That $3,958,821, you have a fund balance policy that says you're going to keep $1,750,000 as your working capital fund balance policy, so you're definitely well above that minimum fund balance policy that you have set for yourselves. There's a number of other statements included tonight, however, I think that that's probably the one that gives you the best snapshot picture of where you ended the year. The remaining statements and notes provide more detailed information on these summarized statements. Does anybody have any questions for me tonight?
I don't hear a question.
Okay, that's great. I would just like to thank everybody for their help, Bonnie, and Sheila, and everybody else at the town that helped me when I was here, and if you have any questions that come up after I leave, you're certainly welcome to call me and ask.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming by, we appreciate it. I must call council attention to... Don't forget the page numbers now. Stand by, be patient. Getting on page 41, where it shows my department budget performance, and each of our departments completed the fiscal year under budget, thereby contributing to our increase in our fund balance. And I'd like to pay tribute to the town manager, department heads, including indeed every person involved in our town government for really bearing down and making sure that we live within our budget, that we work efficiently, and we give the residents in this town, I think, a great product for their money. Anybody else want to say something?
No, totally agree.
Public comment. Do we have people signed up for public comment, chief? No one?
He said you thought the other one.
There are two sign-up sheets for comment. One is for the public hearing, and one is for public comment in general, or normal. If you signed up for the public hearing comment, Bill, you're all right. As the Chair of the Planning Board reported, we have before us their favorable recommendation on a conditional use permit to build a communications tower at the old phone booth location, property on property owned by the Southern Shores Civic Association. And as this is a public use, a conditional use matter, I'm going to turn to our town attorney to connect the business.
Now, Agenda Item Number 8. I'm introducing to the public hearing number CUP 1301, conditional use permit to construct a new wireless telecommunications site, specifically request to locate an AT&amp;T wireless tower on a property in the town owned by the Southern Shores Civic Association. Before we go any further, required to give a restatement of conflict interest to the council. The public board sits as a quasi-judicial panel to determine a conditional use permit. It is imperative that no member participate in or vote on any quasi-judicial matter in a manner that would violate affected person's constitutional rights to an impartial decision-maker. Impermissible violations of due process include, but are not limited to, having a fixed opinion practiced in hearing the matter that is not susceptible to change, undisclosed ex parte communications, and having a close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. At this point, I would just like to mention that counsel for AT&amp;T, Ms. Murphy advised me that she had contacted the mayor and a couple of other council persons. That was a mix-up. She was determining whether or not the town had received everything they needed to receive under your requirements. She apologized and did not realize that that might be viewed as an ex parte communication, but I wanted to disclose that, and if each person that was contacted, we should disclose that for the record. Mr. Mayor, I know you were contacted.
I was contacted.
You were contacted.
I was contacted.
Anyone else contacted?
My comment to her was, the application speaks for itself, and thank you for the call.
My phone rang, I didn't answer it. So, I don't know what, that's a partial contact.
Previously, undisclosed ex parte communications which have not caused you to develop a fixed opinion may be cured through disclosure of facts or information obtained on record. We've done that, assuming there are no more. A party or member of council, including council member addition, may object to any member's participation for lack of impartiality. If an objection is raised to a member's participation and that member does not choose to refuse himself or herself, the remaining members shall by majority vote in on the objection. I will ask each, do you have any conflicts which will potentially make you an impartial decision-maker, or have any undisclosed communication or information you would like to disclose at this time? All right. Moving on from that. Now, we have a motion before the court by John Gall, who is a North Carolina attorney practicing here in Derrin County. He has moved to admit Ms. Lisa M. Murphy, who is licensed to practice law in at least a state or venue, perhaps other state, to be allowed to practice here for the purposes of this quasi-judicial hearing. Our state bar prefers that this be handled just like a judicial matter. This matter was pending in Superior Court, or District Court, we have to go through this process, so this motion is appropriate. We have reviewed the motion and the required statements from the general statutes, we find them to be appropriate. The council's recommendation to the council is that you vote to approve this motion. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I move that council approves the order of Ms. Lisa M. Murphy esquire.
I'll second.
And I would ask that the mayor date and sign the order. You're going to have to change the date to November, scratch the...
This is 16.
For the record, Ms. Murphy, you're now free to practice before this council can do the...
Point of order.
I didn't need to vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Now you can.
Please pass this.
All right. Now, move on to the hearing phase. Would all persons who have signed up to give testimony, please stand and be sworn. We're going to do this all at once.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And before you're sworn, it's an appropriate time for me to advise you that testimony is taken in the form of sworn testimony. It's not a question-and-answer session. If there's evidence you wish to give, this is your opportunity, and you're right to do so.
Do you solemnly swear or firm testimony or doubt to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you. At this point, Wes Haskett, if you call, we... At this point, Wes Haskett, if you could call forward to give a brief presentation for the town's position.
Thank you, Mr. Horne Thaw. Tonight, I will go ahead and give the presentation on the staff report for this application, which is CUP one three zero one, which is an application from New Singular Wireless, represented by Ms. Lisa Murphy. The requested action is a conditional use permit to construct a wireless telecommunications site, which would be a one hundred and thirty-foot tall stealth flagpole and accessory equipment. The location of the subject property would be one forty-eight A Ocean Boulevard. Its zoning is RS One, single-family residential. Its existing land use, as established in the town's currently adopted land use plan, is residential. The surrounding land use and zoning to the north, south, east, and west, all the parcels are established as residential, and they are in the RS One, single-family residential district. The physical characteristics for this property is that it is developed and is an existing park, owned and maintained by the Southern Shores Civic Association. The applicable regulations from the town's zoning ordinance are Article Three, interpretation and definition of terms, Article Four, application of regulations, Article Six, general provisions, Article Seven, schedule of district regulations, Article Ten, administration and enforcement. Staff's analysis is that the applicant seeks a conditional use permit to construct a new wireless telecommunications site, which is a one hundred and thirty-foot tall stealth flagpole and accessory equipment, at one forty-eight A Ocean Boulevard, in accordance with Section thirty-six dash one seventy-five, wireless telecommunications sites and towers as part of the town zoning ordinance. A wireless telecommunications site is a permitted use in the RS One, single-family residential district, provided that a conditional use permit is first granted by the town council, following a recommendation by the town planning board. In granting any conditional use permit, the town council may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in conformity with Article Ten, administration and enforcement. Before granting any conditional use permit, the town council shall make affirmative findings that, A, the applicant has met the requirements of the applicable provisions of the town chapter pertaining to zoning, subdivision chapter, and all other applicable ordinances; B, that the use as proposed will conform with the town's land use plan, and will be compatible with the area in which it is located, if developed in accordance with the conditions specified in the chapter, and additionally required by the town council as authorized by the chapter; C, that the use will not materially endanger the public health and safety, if located where proposed and developed according to the plan submitted; and lastly, D, that the use as proposed will not overburden the town volunteer fire department firefighting capabilities and the county water supply capacity to the town, as said facilities and capabilities will exist on the completion date of the conditional use for which the application is made. Finally, staff's recommendation is that the land use plan identifies this area as residential in the RS One, single-family residential zoning district, which is consistent with the proposed use. All applicable regulations of the town zoning ordinance, and all of town staff's concerns that are applicable to the application, have been identified or are addressed in the recommended conditions. The town planning board did recommend approval of this application four to one, and town staff recommends approval of the application as well. The planning board and town staff have the following conditions for consideration tonight. Condition number one, the conditional use permit shall expire if the improvements permitted are not completely constructed within twenty-four months of the date of the approval of a building permit. Number two, the tower shall provide space for at least three providers, plus space for emergency communication antennas used by the town police department and Southern Shores volunteer fire department when needed. Condition three, town council consider publicly maintained roadways as providing additional property for calculation of setbacks, or reduce the setback requirement to one-third of the height of the tower. Condition four, electrical and telephone lines serving the wireless telecommunications site shall be installed underground from the point of existing service. Condition five, sound emission devices such as alarms, bells, buzzers, and the like are not to be used. Condition number six, maintain landscaping requirements in accordance with Section thirty-six dash one seventy-five. Condition seven, with the exception of flagpole lighting, all lighting at the wireless telecommunications site shall be suited, and shall comply with the provisions for outdoor lighting contained in Section thirty-six dash one sixty-six. Condition eight, any proposed signage to be installed at the wireless telecommunications site shall be in accordance with Section thirty-six dash one seventy-five. Any future signage on the CMU wall must be in accordance with the town's sign ordinance. Condition number nine, the wireless telecommunications site shall be developed in accordance with the town's flood damage prevention ordinance. Condition ten, the wireless telecommunications site shall be developed in accordance with the town's lot disturbance ordinance. Condition number eleven, an annual renewal permit must be obtained within three hundred and sixty-five days of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy relating to the building permit. Annual renewal permits shall then be required within three hundred and sixty-five days of the previously issued annual renewal permit. Condition twelve, if the wireless telecommunications site is not operated for one hundred and eighty continuous days in a twelve-month period, it shall be considered abandoned, and the facility owner shall be responsible for the removal of all structures and equipment on the site within ninety days of receipt of such notification by the town. And lastly, condition number thirteen is that the applicant must strictly abide by all other requirements for the town code, and must also comply with all other local, state, and federal requirements. That concludes my staff report, and I would also like to note that as required in the town zoning ordinance, adjoining property owner notifications were sent out to all of the adjoining property owners, and legal notice was posted on the site. That concludes my staff report. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, or wait until later, at a later time.
Ms. Murphy, does the applicant have any questions? Does the board have any, the council have any questions?
I understand.
Not at this time.
At this time, thank you, Mr. Haskett. If that's the showing of staff, I would ask Ms. Murphy and her witnesses to please come forward and present the evidence.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I thank you for approving the motion to allow me to appear before you this evening, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which as you know trades as AT&amp;T. I will try to be much more brief than I was at the planning board meeting, but as we advance through the slides, as many of you know, because several of you were on the council back in two thousand nine, right around this time in two thousand nine, AT&amp;T and the other carriers worked with the town, the planning advisory board and the wireless group specifically, to try to identify ways to provide better wireless services in Southern Shores, and the next slide just talks about some of the reasons why the need for wireless services, what it has become today. Let's see, I was thinking you had control of that, I'm sorry. Let's see, there we go. Just a couple of numbers, the most shocking to me is by the first half of two thousand twelve, so the first half of last year, thirty-six percent of Americans were wireless-only in their homes, which means that you need to have good, reliable wireless service in residential areas, and not just along the interstate, which is historically where wireless service has been. The other two interesting numbers on this slide, one of them is that wireless penetration is at one hundred and two percent, which means there is one wireless device for every man, woman, and child in the country, at least one wireless device. And then between two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine, when we were here working to have the ordinance changed, data on AT&amp;T's network increased by five thousand percent. So, the beginning of wireless in the mid to late nineties, it was voice only, it was a luxury to have for the traveling public, if you were a realtor, or if you were somebody who worked in your car, had to stay in communication. But now, by and large, wireless devices are everywhere, they're used not just for voice, but they're used at home for surfing the internet, streaming Boston Red Sox games, you name it. This is how people are getting their internet service. Just basic information about wireless, because there are things that folks don't know, it's basic radio signals, two-way radio communications, it is a handheld device communicating with antennas up on a tall structure. Where there are existing tall structures, AT&amp;T, just like all the other carriers, will hang their antennas, as they are on the water tanks we'll talk about here, they just need something high to get those antennas up. So, the need for a structure is really the need to get the antennas up so that they can communicate with each other, and they can communicate with your handheld device. Basically, a wireless network, I like to think of, not unlike your cordless phone at home, you've got a base station that you plug in to a power source and your phone line at home, it's got a little antenna on it, and you can walk a hundred feet away, two hundred feet away, depending on your cordless phone, and still get that cordless phone to work. With a wireless site, you've got a series of these base stations and antennas, and they connect with each other, and as you're moving from one cell to the other, the antennas hand off to each other, and that's how you're able to continue a call. So, unlike your cordless phone, you get in your car and you start driving down your driveway, your cordless phone's gonna stop working, because once it gets a hundred feet away from the base station, it loses that signal. Wireless is a much bigger application of that, but very similar, and the network is what enables the antennas to hand off your signal and your call. Basic information on everyday comparisons, folks ask us about the emissions from wireless sites, the, all wireless facilities are regulated by the federal government, the Federal Communications Commission, and wireless carriers are required to show that their facilities are safe, and I'm gonna go ahead and hand something to Philip that I don't think was in the application. This is just a report that shows for the record that the site is compliant with the FCC requirements as far as our emission safety requirements. The proposed facility, as I said, will comply with all federal safety requirements. Just to give you an idea, at ground level, maximum possible exposure is one point six percent of what the FCC requires or limits, and that's orders of magnitude below safety limits that the FCC sets, and by comparison, the fluorescent bulbs in this room are giving off five point oh to six and a half percent MPE. You've got your TV, your microwave, your PC monitor, this gives you a comparison of the emissions levels for those things that you have in your room, in your home, and all around you every day. The actual emissions from these antennas at the base of the tower are gonna be far less than some common things that you have in your home. This is a site overview, it's just a network of AT&amp;T's existing antenna sites. In this area, by and large, the antenna sites are co-located on existing tall structures. So if you look to the north, and the pointer on this isn't gonna work, but you see a, oops, I don't wanna do that. You see, you've got a blue site to the north there, and a blue site to the south, it's the blue site to the south is the one that we're looking at, that's the proposed facility. Just to the north of that, and just to the south of that, you'll see Xs that are black and white, those are the existing sites that AT&amp;T is operating on. The one to the north is the Duck Water Tank, the one to the south is the Southern Shores Water Tank. And as I mentioned, AT&amp;T, like other carriers, they're just looking for tall structures on which to hang their antennas, the very first thing they look for when they're building out their network is those existing structures. When it comes down to filling in the holes where there aren't structures, that's when we get into the challenge of working with the community, working with the federal requirements, state requirements, citizen requirements, and the RF technical requirements to come up with a location that sort of meets that intersection of all of those interests. This shows you that same network of sites, and the coverage that's coming off of those sites to the north, you'll see, in this one, the green area is the Duck Water Tank, to the south, you'll see the area around the Southern Shores Water Tank, and in the area in between, which is blue, yellow, and then white, is this hole in coverage that AT&amp;T, and largely the other carriers are experiencing as well, because if you remember, that the same two water tanks that AT&amp;T's on, other companies are on as well. So recognizing that there was this hole in coverage, as I mentioned, the planning advisory board had a wireless committee that met with the community, met with the industry representatives, met with the radio frequency engineers, to try to find solutions in the town that would work for the wireless carriers. Out of that came ten suggested or recommended sites, and a revised wireless ordinance, and the wireless ordinance really recognized in the search ring that I just showed you, that open area where coverage was needed, ten sites that would potentially fill that gap, and the site referred to as number ten, which was Triangle Park, is a site that the current application is made in connection with. This shows you what happens at that particular location, you turn those antennas on at a hundred and thirty feet, and this is the coverage that would result from that, so it fills in that coverage gap. This is the map, just to, one thing about this particular, this is actually from the site plan, and it shows you the layout of the compound, but as Wes indicated, we've requested, because this is a stealth structure, that the setback be a third of the tower height, and in your packets, there is a letter from an engineer licensed in North Carolina dated October twenty-second, that confirms that within that area, that forty-three point three-three feet, that the facility would be designed to collapse within that area in connection with our request to have the fall zone area reduced. The shelter itself is eleven and a half by twenty-eight, and around the shelter, on the outside of the shelter, is going to be a walled compound, which is indicated in your staff report. It'll be a CMU wall with smooth stucco, sand-colored. Originally, there was some discussion about putting a sign on that, there will not be a sign on that. That gives you the layout of the compound inside, I know, obviously, because there are concerns about whether there will be a generator, a permanent generator on the inside of that shelter, so if the site is down without power for any period of time, the generator will come up and the site will be able to continue to provide service. This just shows you the landscaping, so you've got the wall around the, you've got the flagpole stealth structure, you've got the equipment shelter, around that is this walled compound, a ten-foot wall, and then on the outside of that is additional landscaping, as you've seen there, and the types of landscaping that have been chosen are such that will withstand the difficult and dry, salty conditions. This shows you the, an elevation of the facility, so you've got the wall at the base, a hundred and thirty-foot structure, the flagpole stealth structure, the antennas are actually inside a canister, so you don't see the antennas on the outside, all you see is a flagpole with a flag on it, and the antennas are inside, which is why they refer to it as stealth. This shows you some simulated photos that AT&amp;T took, they floated a balloon, and then took photos to show what the flagpole would look like at a variety of locations. This is the view, get this one, from south, from Trout Run and Ocean Boulevard. You've got a view here of what it would look like from the southeast, from Porpoise Run and Duck Road. The next one is from the north, from a hundred and thirty Ocean Boulevard, and again, this particular location, the, shows you where the balloon was floated, and then simulated in what the flagpole would look like at the proposed height. A view west from the beach, and then this simulation of the wall, again, this was from the prior iteration where there was a different exterior and a sign originally, but the association determined that they, there was no sign that would be put there. So I've shown you what it is projected to look like, I wanted to show you some pictures of actual, existing, real-life wireless sites that are stealth flagpoles. This is an actual wireless site that's a stealth flagpole at an elementary school in Hampton called Langley Elementary School. This is off of Interstate two sixty-four up in Norfolk at Willoughby Spit, this is a flagpole very similar in height to the one that we're talking about, and an existing flagpole, and ninety-nine percent of the people that drive by it have no idea it has wireless antennas. This is another view of that flagpole, and it shows the equipment shelter that was built for that particular instance, and it was, that was the style that the Civic Association there had requested. This is at a cemetery in Virginia Beach, Witch Duck Cemetery, this is a much taller, this is a hundred and fifty foot, but that gives you an idea of what they look like in real life. But that gives you an idea of what they look like in real life. In conclusion, as your staff report indicates, the land use plan identifies this area as RS1, which is consistent with the proposed use. And as I mentioned, there are very few possible physical locations per the ordinance where a structure, a wireless structure would be acceptable. All applicable zoning ordinance regulations and staff concerns have been addressed in the recommended conditions, which AT&amp;T concurs with. Applicant has met the requirements of the applicable provisions of the ordinances. The use is compatible with the land use plan and will be compatible with the area in which it's located. It will not materially endanger public health and safety, will not overburden the volunteer fire department and county water supply, as, as was indicated. And as was indicated by Mr. Haskett, town staff and the planning board both recommend approval. We respectfully request that you grant AT&amp;T's conditional use permit application. I'm happy to answer questions either now or to, to rebut later on.
At this point, I would ask the staff, do you have any questions for the applicant? Counsel, do any members of council have any questions at this time for the applicant?
Will we have questions later? Can we ask questions later?
Sure.
Okay.
I, I have one question, Lisa. The, the power generator, how is that going to be fueled? Is it, is it natural gas, LP or diesel?
This one is diesel fueled and there's a tank that fits underneath the generator within the shelter.
Okay, do you know how long that runs for? What, what the provision is for? How much diesel and how long it will power it?
I believe it's a 200 gallon tank.
Okay.
So that would, would be several, several days anyway. But one, each site has an eight-hour battery backup power supply. If you can't get a generator to it or a power source to it within that eight or 10-hour window, then, you know, you would have issues, which is why we've planned a generator for this site.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you.
It's time we invite members of the public. In the order at which you signed up, you have some, we're gonna retrieve the signup sheet. We're going to invite each of you up in the order at which you signed up. I'm reminding you all, this is an evidentiary hearing, not a question and answer session. Richard Travers? Travers, come forward. Come to the podium, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rich Travers. My home is at 34 Porpoise Run. My intent being here this evening is not to discuss the, or present a comment as to the merit of this construction or to potential health effects, but solely to the purpose of what it could potentially do to property values in the immediate area. I recognized all the photos that were shown here this evening of the other towers by the representative from AT&amp;T. I did not notice one residential home in any of those pictures. I've heard the tower referred to as a stealth tower. I don't believe that 130-foot structure among residential homes that cannot exceed 35 feet should be designated or have any type of a connotation that would indicate stealth. Having grown up in New York City, 130 feet, 13 stories is not a lot, but when the tallest building next to it is 35 feet, I think it's gonna be somewhat obvious. As to the adverse impact, there are many articles that are written about real estate in close proximity to the cell towers and there are varying opinions as to whether there is an impact on real estate property or not. I would point to the minutes of the Southern Shores Town Council meeting of May 1st, 2007, where an individual addressed the town council and said that he was representing a property owner that wanted to sell a property in close proximity to Sand Fiddler, where there was at that time, a proposal when the cell towers were not allowed in Southern Shores, other than on top of a water tank. That owner lost the sale of that property due to an article that appeared in the local paper. So again, sometimes perception outweighs logic in fact, and that's my sole purpose for entering a comment here tonight. That individual that represented the owner left the meeting and left the council with, can't there be a better place than in a residential neighborhood to place a structure of this type? And I would pose the same question to you. Isn't there a better place than next to somebody's private home that has a real estate investment that brings renters in? And renters support Southern Shores and many of the communities on the Outer Banks. And if they see this, they may not want to rent that property. So again, financial harm, it's a disadvantage. And I know I'm getting close to my three minutes and I thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Travers. Before you sit down, does staff or the applicant have any questions for Mr. Travers?
Thank you, sir.
Should we address the questions at the end or?
Think it'd be easier. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Steve Uperity? Sir, if you can kindly state your name and your address, please.
Sure, Steve Uperity. I'm at 157 Wax Myrtle Trail. I live in close proximity to where this tower is going to be located. I've gone past cell towers in the past and a lot of times as you're driving, you get your call dropped. And I'm wondering if I'm gonna have cellphone service. I know that's a question, but it's also a concern and some other folks probably have the same concern, live in the same area.
All right, are there any specific questions for the witness at this time by either staff or the applicant?
Thank you, sir.
Bruce? Having a hard time reading your, begins with an A. 160 Clanshale Trail, Bruce?
I think that was in your.
Okay, all right. Bill Cazar?
Carter.
Carter. Carter.
So Carter.
Please state your names, sir, and your address.
Bill C- Bill Cogger, at 7 King Guide Trail, Southern Shores. As you might guess, I've been a little anxious to speak because I've been making sure I'm on the list. But I do want to thank the town council for their patience and listening to all the public comments. Hopefully, I can squeeze this into three minutes if I stop embellishing here. I applaud our new mayor, who's gonna bear the brunt of, of operating, making sure everything works good here in the future. I was at the, the planning board meeting the other night with Sam Williams, did a great job. Saw the same, same briefing and I had to admit, a lot of my fears about the imbalance of the flag versus, you know, the size of the tower, what put aside. It is a very large flag. I think it's what, 12 by 24 feet? Be a little bit awkward to handle, but, you know, you know, like the Marines do things. Be a little hard to do it that way. The planning board meeting, it's gonna be kinda hard for me to, to really stress the comments because I don't know exactly what the planning board recommended. Now, I, I thought they recommended no light, but that kinda went by. If the flagpole is not going to be lit, I really don't have much to say about my concern about the sea turtles, which would undoubtedly be, would undoubtedly come into play with a, with a tower of this height, with a 500 watt bulb, shimmering flag. But if, if the plans are not to, to have a light, or at the very least, not to have a light during the nesting period, then pretty much my comments are nulled. If the stress is gonna be to have the, the flag at 24-hour, 365, I think we come right up against the Endangered Species Act, something which we have little look, no control of at a local level. Having worked for the EPA for a number of years, I know quite well that quickly when you involve endangered species, you wind up with an EIS, which I think none of us really want to get to, go down that road. My, another concern is, a lot of the things I'm finding out in dribs and drabs, I think I should've found out through the public, you know, the public information process. I found out the other day that, that there were actual nesting, sea turtle nests at the Chickahawke Overpass, which I did not know. And I, I didn't even think about the Endangered Species Act. I was all worried about the, you know, the, the look of the flag, but, you know, I, and the size of the flag, that just kinda came out and all these little pieces, dribs and drabs. So I think we need a much better public information process at work. You know, like if you remember the Mid-Currituck Bridge, public information process was very thorough. Everybody got on board. Everybody got postcards and went back and forth. I don't, I don't propose anything that extensive, but at least make a little bit better effort to go out there with details, you know? Of course, the logistics of the flag are gonna place a great burden on the Civic Association. It's not gonna be any easy task to be running this flag up and down in all kinds of weather. I also heard that, that their recommendation was gonna be to not have a light. But see, this again smacks up against the, the lack of information that we're getting. So I, I hope, hope that'll be clarified later at the meeting. In brief, I think we're married to this site too hard. There's a number of other sites that would be available in the town and there's a number of other ways of doing this. There's a, there's an excellent stealth pine tree off of the James River Bridge, quite kind of blends in with some of the very tall pines, which we also have here. I also had in mind possibly a, a lighthouse. You know, maybe that would even, in a way, add a little bit to our tourist value, perhaps. You know, if it's done real good. And that, of course, remains to be seen. I guess I'm at my limit, so I might, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Tyler? Oh, is there a question? I think they're gonna reserve those for the end, but thank you. Please state your name and address.
Sarah Tyler, 165 Wax Myrtle Trail. I built my house on Wax Myrtle Trail, which is near the south end, right almost at the top of Porpoise Run. And when I first built my house, I could see the yellow flashing light from my decks. I'm a little elevated. And over the years, our growth has covered that. I don't have that flashing at me when I want to sit on my deck or have a good time, just relaxing and not have this thing going all the time. Now I'm facing the issues of property values and my house is on the market. And I'm also going to be facing the potential lighting that was brought up earlier. And if it is a 365 light with an American flag, that is going to be like a circus beacon that's going to be just right there in my night vision. And I don't appreciate that. I don't want it to happen. Also, there, if there, if this is gonna be a done deal and this is gonna go through, if they're gonna put a flag up, put a Southern Shores flag. It doesn't have to be lit at night. And/or put the American flag up only on holidays during the day. Because I really don't want to see this beacon peering up in my, I probably could read a book in my living room with that light on. So thank you and please consider that.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, do you want Mr. Floyd and Mr. Swartz to testify now or do you have them speak at the end?
Speak at the end.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boone? My, Ms. Boone? Would you please state your name and?
Yes.
Address, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Myra Ladbone. I'm here on behalf of James H. Caraway. He could not be here tonight due to the flu. He is the adjacent property owner to the proposed cell tower. He is, he owns the property at 147 Ocean Boulevard. He has some real concerns, do not have the details, but he will be writing a letter. So I just wanted to let y'all know that. Thank you.
Thank you. 147 Beach Street. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Larry Gallo and I'm the Vice President of the Civic Association. My address is 147 Beach Street Trail. And I'm here just to review how the entire process took place with the association. In May of 2010, at the general membership meeting, the notice was provided to all the members. There was open discussion for and against the proposal, resulting with members largely for leasing the property. There were articles provided in the June and July 2010 and August, September 2010 newsletter, sent to members describing the tower and related issues. Ballots were mailed via the US Postal Service to 1,800 members with a voting deadline of October 8th, 2010. A total of 10, of 1,070 ballots were returned by the October deadline. 64% were returned from Southern Shores residents and 55% were received from out-of-town members. Of those, one, of those 10, of those 1,070 returned, 93% voted just to lease the property to install the property or the tower with a slightly higher percentage for in-town residents. Most recently, the general membership agendas published in advance for the April 8th and July 8th meetings included discussion of the cell, cell tower developments. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Susan Denine, 61 Deer Path Lane. One big thing to consider is that these towers come down more than you think and the common denominator in most of the collapses is wind. Wind is something the Outer Banks has more of than probably any area in the entire world. And this location, for the triangle location, is in the midst of people walking, biking, and driving during any season and any time of the day or night. If the tower is built to sustain gale force winds, then I have to wonder, if the structure is compromised at the base, wouldn't it fall in one piece and possibly injure someone or something?
Thank you.
State your name. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Pat Ringwall. I live at 75 Gravy Pond in Chickahawke. I have been requested to read a letter from Shelley Tarleton and Ray Griffin at 73, 73 Landfall Loop in Chickahawke. They are out of town, that's the reason I'm reading the letter. This letter has also been sent to the council, but my request, the request was that I read it. So ear indulgence. Members of the council, we are contracting, we are contracting, contacting you to offer our input regarding our support for the telecommunications tower.
Ma'am, would you please speak into the microphones or pick your audio? Speaking to the microphone?
Oh.
So your audio?
It scares me. Okay. Well, anyhow, the telecommunication tower, public hearing to be held November 6th, 2013. Well, anyhow, the telecommunication tower, public hearing to be held November 6, 2013. We will be out of the state and unable to attend the public hearing. We respectfully request that you enter this communication officially in the amendments. We strongly support the construction and installation of the tower as described. Our current access cellular service in our home is minimally, minimal at best. Our typical needs to be outdoors on the porch or find a spot where we can get a constant signal. Service inside the house is sporadic at best. This is an inconvenience for us and our guests. We do maintain a landline as we cannot depend upon our cell service. Last month, we had an incident in our home that underlined the critical need for additional cell service. The, a service person working in our home suffered a heart attack. Because we were home and able to call 911 on the landline, we were able to stay with the individual and call for help. Had only one of us been home, we would have had to go outside, disallowing the ability to monitor and report the signs and symptoms to the 911 operator. Had the plumber been there alone, as so often happens in our area, he would have been unable to get through to any services. The plumber did succumb, I'm sad to say. While we support the construction of the cellular tower prior to this incident, we now believe this is a critical mandate as a matter of public safety and well-being. Visitors in rental homes in our neighborhood should be told that there is an available landline on the properties that they rent, as they rent at their own risk with regard to being able to call for emergency services. You may, in reality, be providing a lifeline that is designed in no way is objectionable and should be brought to fruition as soon as possible for benefit of all. Standing aside for myself, this is not the first time that we have talked about a cell tower. Several years ago, Chickahaw was presented with the ability to have a cell tower in their green space. The board decided against that, otherwise that's the reason we're here tonight. Again, I do believe what was said in this, that it is a lifeline, and perhaps the board really should consider that the citizens do need this support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Charles Knight, 19 Perry Wickel Place, Southern Shores. Really, I hadn't planned to speak, but I would just like to support what the last individual said. I have workmen who come to my home constantly having to use a landline in my house to get any help that they need from outside. It's just a very difficult situation for them all. So that's just what I wish to add. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Knight, I missed your address.
It's 19, excuse me, 19 Perry Wickel Place.
Perry Wickel. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Murphy, at this time, I'd like to offer you the opportunity to respond to anything you've heard. Same offer applies to Mr. Askin.
I guess I'll go first. Wanted to address a couple of the questions and concerns. The, as the ordinance requires, the height of the stealth structure, because it is meant to be stealth and it is meant to blend, is to be no taller than what is required for to provide communication services and to allow for colocation. And 130 feet, which is the proposed height of this stealth structure, is just that. It is the height that enables AT&amp;T to provide their service, and it would also allow for colocation, as is indicated in the staff report and is required by the conditions. There would be places for three colocators plus the town, should they have needs as well. With regard to the light, a gentleman mentioned environmental concerns. Because, and I mentioned the regulations of wireless facilities, the FCC not only regulates the emissions from wireless facilities, but they also regulate the use. And as part of any registration for a tower, the applicant has to go through a full, what's referred to as a NEPA scrub. So unlike a gas station or anything else you might want to build, when a wireless carrier or tower company wants to build a tower, they have to go through a full NEPA scrub. So they have to explore endangered species, archaeological finds, they have to send notices to local Indian tribes, and all of that input and feedback comes back and is reported. And in this case, AT&amp;T has performed this NEPA scrub and has determined that this particular structure would not have any environmental impact or historical impact. With regard to the light on the facility, the light that we're talking about potentially is a light that would illuminate the flag. So it's not an FAA air transport light that would be a beacon or anything like that. We're simply talking about a light at the base of the flagpole that would light the flag if this were to be an American flag. And as was discussed at the planning board meeting, because the civic association is the landlord, it's been left up to them what type of flag will go on the structure, whether it'll be American, whether it'll be tended, whether a light will be required for the flag. So hopefully that addresses the concerns. With regard to the tower fall zone, I again address the letter dated October 22 from the structural engineer, that the structure itself will meet the EIA, TIA, 222, REV-G requirements. And these are specific structural requirements for these types of structures, and they take into account wind loading and weight loading specifically based on your location and proximity to either the coast or the mountain. So unlike a regular flagpole or a tree, this structure will be designed structurally to sustain hurricane winds and wind gusts, and will be designed specifically to collapse, as the engineer indicates, within that 43.33-foot setback area. The civic association vote was mentioned, and I point out that the indication that over 90% of the members of the civic association voted in favor. And again, when we were looking at the 10 potential sites, I remember that the planning board and staff was quick to point out, these are physical locations we've identified, but you have to go find a willing landlord. And in this case, as was mentioned, another association was not a willing landlord, but we were able to find a willing landlord in Southern Shores Civic Association. On the property values, I'm going to submit for the record a report from a county tax assessor indicating his determination that there's no impact on residential property values. Just so you all have that for the record. And I'll point out as well, as was highlighted by the last two speakers, there are many folks now who see the availability of reliable wireless service at their home as a benefit to their property values, especially if you have a rental property. And more and more, what we're hearing is folks are reluctant to move to a neighborhood where they don't have wireless service. And I think that's important. Again, and that goes back to one of the first slides, people are using their phones in their homes, and the only way to provide the service inside the home is to have some antennas nearby. And what we've tried to do is design a structure that gets the antennas where they need to be in a way that can blend more aesthetically with the surrounding. Last thing I'll point out about property values is typically those look at non-stealth structures. So a regular old tower like you'd see on the side of the road. And again, what we're talking about, the way it will be designed, there will be many who will never know that there are antennas on the inside of that. And I think that's an important component in what impact potentially that that will have. Lady brought up Dr. Carraway. Mr. Floyd and I with AT&amp;T had a long conversation with Mr. Carraway in the ride down in the car this afternoon, and hopefully we addressed his concerns, and we provided him with the NEAR report indicating compliance with the FCC requirements, the same report that we submitted on the record tonight. I'm happy to address any other questions. I think that covers most of the questions that I heard.
Ms. Schack, have any further comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, before you make your comment, Lax, I'm going to let you make your comment, and then I'll have any questions from Council, both of you.
Thank you. Lisa, I believe, covered the majority of the issues I was going to touch on quickly. One would be what, why are we referring to this as a stealth structure? And I'm just going to reference that that is how it's defined in the wireless ordinance that's adopted in zoning ordinance. And I'll just define that for everyone, just for the reference. Stealth structure is a wireless support structure designed to look like or incorporated within a structure which has a primary purpose as something other than a wireless support structure, or is designed in a manner in which all wireless facilities attached to the structure are concealed from view, including but not limited to trees, flagpoles, slick sticks, which are flagpoles without flags, clock towers, bell towers, or church steeples. Also, wanted to address quickly, the endangered species question with respect to turtles. There was the NEPA report, as Ms. Murphy identified, and they did not have any objections within that report to endangered species. With respect to lighting, the town ordinance does require United States flags to be lit. The flag or the light itself is not to exceed 500 watts. That would be one specific restriction on it. And lastly, with respect to wind and the fall zone, we were, the ordinance does require an engineer certification that the structure can withstand sustained winds of 135 miles per hour, and that was provided to us in a letter from Mr. Williams, signed and sealed with Calana Engineer, and that it would fall within the one-third setback of 43 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Askin. At this time, Mayor, members of council, have any questions for Ms. Murphy?
I do.
Ms. Murphy, turn of the podium, please, ma'am.
Would you like to start, Councilman Kowalki?
I'd love to. I read the Environmental Corporation of America, this tome, which is quite interesting. I do have, it's actually only one question, it's about lighting. And it's in, the same basic statement is done in two sections, and I don't know what lighting we're talking about, so that's why I'm asking that. And I'd love to tell you the page it's on, but your report is, I believe numbered, has numbered pages. But it is under the Velocitel Attention, Justin Bridges, Subject Informal Biological Assessment, Proposed 130-Foot Overall Height Flagpole Communication Structure Subject. It's to Dr., to dear Mr. Bridges. It says, "The proposed telecommunication," and I'm sorry, in paragraph 1 under background, says, "The proposed telecommunication structure would not be lighted and guide wires would not be used." That statement is made. Then the next statement, which tends to say the same, is, and excuse me because I'm tabbed here to try to find my way through this, it's under the, it's under the evaluation form, I do believe, and it says the same basic thing, that it will not be lit. And so what lighting are we talking about?
So that specifically, and remember, the report is for wireless communication towers. The lighted and guide wires refers to, guide wires, a type of structure. So there are towers that are supported with guide wires, which this is not. And the light in this case would be the FAA, if FAA were to require a beacon, which is typically only a requirement of structures over 199 feet. So unless you're near an airport or in an overlay or next to ocean or helicopter base.
So that was the light, the beacon lighting?
Yes. It was a reference to. And the concern there is though the lighting required by the FAA is either a red light or a strobe light, and those can be attractive to migratory birds. Guide wires as well can cause bird kills. So those are two factors that are always looked at from an endangered species standpoint, and they typically are only going to be an issue if you have a guide wire tower and a tower that has a flashing or a strobe light that's required to alert air travelers to the height of the tower.
And my second question is that in this relationship, this is a private contract between AT&amp;T or whoever is going to have that tower eventually at some point when they change or don't change ownership of towers, and the Southern Shore Civic Association. And your corporation has nothing to say about flying of flags at this point? This is none of your basic business kind of thing? You supply the wires and the, and not the wires, but the?
This structure.
Structure to be pulled the flag, and what happens is up to the civic association?
Well, the way this particular, so there is a lease, an actual ground lease between AT&amp;T and the Southern Shores Civic Association that I can have Mr. Floyd speak to directly. But in this particular case, there was a great deal of deference given to the civic association and what they would potentially like to see as far as a type of flag. A lady mentioned a Southern Shores as opposed to a U.S. flag. So there is a great deal of discretion that the landlord has and control over the overall look of the flagpole and the flag, and whether the flag goes up and down or whether there's a light on it. But that would be part of that landlord-tenant relationship.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
In your experience with towers, have you found a, an installation, or do you know of an installation where the flag is lighted from the top of the pole with light deflected downward?
No, typically it would be lit if it were an American flag. The light would be at the base, just lighting enough to light the top of the flag. So it's not from the top down, it's from the bottom up. If it were to be an American flag that was up all the time with a light on it.
I'll ask the question because I know that there are available smaller flagpoles. I don't know about 135-foot pole. Lighting systems where the light is reflected downward from the top of the pole and shielded. I just wondered if you had anything like that for a 135-foot pole? And I guess the answer is no.
Yeah, typically they go, if it's an American flag, they go by the flag requirements. The flag at Willoughby, I believe, is lit, and that's lit from the base up. Again, to get around the requirement, you saw the Langley Elementary School, that was actually a flag of the city of Hampton, so they got around the lighting requirements. But in this case, I think we've left to the civic association what type of flag, and we'll work with them on whether or not it needs to be lit.
I noticed on the, one of the defections, some external antenna. Is that for fire department?
That would be the only possible external antenna, if the fire department required it. And at this point, it's my understanding that they haven't, haven't required it, but it would be built to accommodate them, should they have a need in the future.
Could I follow up on that question?
Well, let me follow up.
Same subject. Okay, go ahead.
When you say it would be built to accommodate them, would it be pre-wire?
From a structural standpoint, there would be two things. There'd have to be a port where they could get to it from the outside, but also structurally it would have to be built to accommodate the weight, which wouldn't be much, and the wind loading that would be added by that, by the addition of that antenna.
That was one of my questions, too, sir. You can follow up on that, I appreciate it. What, it also says we're going to allow three other people to have antenna. Are those also outside or are they internal?
All internal.
All internal.
Yeah, so if you, if you go back to the elevation sheet, which is in your?
C3.
C3, yeah. If you look at that, it shows, I think in this case it shows two or three internal, but the design would be such that the canister would be hollow and there would be ports inside for those?
That's what those transparent canisters are.
Three sets, three sets of antennas, yes.
Could I ask, I have another question? Could I ask, um, my, I have another question related to that, but it's really more for, for Wes, so if we want to wait till later to ask that, I can, or, doesn't matter.
The council's pleasure, if you'd like.
My, my question on that one would have to do, would each vendor, say Verizon, comes and they want to be in the same thing, do they have to file a conditional permit use the same as we're going through now?
That would be considered a co-location to an existing facility, and all ordinance allows for streamlined procedure, and I believe statutes may also address that as well, but the zoning ordinance would require that it's a streamlined procedure, and it would only be reviewed administratively, as long as they meet the requirements established in the ordinance.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions to Ms. Murphy?
I've, I've got a couple. One is, out of curiosity, since, I couldn't seem to find it in here, the, what would be the expected lifespan of that structure?
You mean that the str- the flagpole is designed?
Right.
It would be designed to, with, obviously structurally, to withstand the wind loading and weight loading that we've discussed, and at least to go through the full life of the lease term with the, with the Civic Association?
And the term of the lease?
My understanding, and I may have to bring Chip up here, I believe it's a five-year initial term with either four or five additional five-year option terms.
So, I guess my next question would act, well, I have another one for you.
Okay.
But I'm going to turn to Wes. So, if the, if they do not release the prop, the, the structure, or the, the land on which the structure is, that would, the stipulation number, what was it, 12?
Yes, sir, number 12. That would be considered abandonment.
Okay.
That is part of our ordinance, and we recommend that be a condition in the case that were to happen. Yes, that's correct. If the site is not operated for 180 continuous days, and the 12-month period is considered abandoned, and the facility owner shall be responsible for the removal of all structures and equipment within 90 days of the town's notification.
Okay. And the entity doing that would be the tower company, or it wouldn't be left to the Civic Association?
We have left it to facility owner, and in this case, I believe that would be AT&amp;T.
Okay. Okay, the question I have for you now, with the storage of flammable liquids and a battery, bank of batteries, I presume it's going to be a fairly large bank of batteries, would the fire department, number one, receive any training or assistance from AT&amp;T? And would they have access to that property in the event of a fire, or some electrical shortage, or something like that?
I'll address the battery question first, so that the backup battery is completely enclosed with the equipment cabinets, the base station equipment that's within the shelter, so it's not a, a separate sort of standalone battery, it's, it's inclusive in the, in that equipment cabinet. So, you've got a cabinet that has the equipment, the, the base station portion that runs the antennas, and that's located within the equipment shelter. As far as the requirements for the generator itself, and the, the generator within the equipment shelter, that would be subject to your site plan, you know, review, and would go through that level of review prior to, to construction. So, the, any issues, I think that would be called out by fire, your fire department would be addressed at that point in time. The, the compounds themselves are monitored remotely, so if there were a fire, or there were an incident, they would know immediately, and folks monitoring the tower would be deployed, and I'm certain they would contact the fire department as well.
The, the structure itself, as far as the stor- the, the facility structure, is that common construction? Would?
The, the shelter or the pole?
Shelter.
The shelter itself, yeah, they're typically, it's a prefab equipment shelter, this one, I think, is an 11 and a half by 28-foot shelter, but it's a prefab shelter that they actually bring in and place on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, is, is the site monitored in any way by AT&amp;T? I mean, do they keep the records of the comings and goings, that go who's through the, those who's the gate, are there cameras on site?
It is monitored remotely, as is every site, because they unfortunately have issues sometimes with theft of copper wire and that type of thing, so they do monitor remotely with cameras. There is, to get into the compound in that walled structure, there would be security of some sort, whether or not there's a, typically, it's a lock, and each of the, the users, each of the antenna companies has their own combination, so they know who's been in, when, who's coming, who's going in the site.
And the Civic Association, I assume, would have their access to that if they were, wanted to use that to raise and lower a flag?
Yes, we can, yeah, absolutely, we'd have to work out the details of that, again, with the Civic Association.
All right. Thank you.
I have a, can I have a, ask a few more?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, I, just to get this straight in my mind, which I think is pretty straight, this is a single structure, it is, it is a flag. The drawings of the accessory antennas, the antennas will not be there, because reflected in your report here, both the police department and the fire department has stated that they have no current use for any additional antennas, because they run on a, I didn't say that, but they run on a different system currently. And so therefore, what we actually will have, if approved, is a flagpole with nothing sticking out on, on the edges to create any other antennas.
That is correct.
Do you have any built-in extinguishing systems in this, in this unit?
As far as the, the generator?
No, I mean, as in, as in chemical extinguishers, automatic extinguishers, anything to start to put out fires in case you have one?
I would defer to Chip on that. Chip, I don't, he, he works on the, more on the development end of things.
And also, I mean, I'm just asking that question, you may also comment and say, is that even an issue? I mean, do you have fire issues on the, in these units?
Hey, good evening, my name's Chip Floyd, I'm, uh, reside at 712 Brander Mill Drive in Chesapeake. I do site acquisition work for AT&amp;T. To answer your question, no, there are not extinguishers inside of the facility. I'm not aware of an instance where they, we've had an issue with that in the past. So, so to answer your question, no, there is not.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could, could I ask a question, Chip? There's a diesel-powered generator will be on site?
Yes, sir.
Is it a standby?
Yes, sir.
What is the horsepower of the, of the engine?
I'm not sure what the exact horsepower is. Like Lisa mentioned earlier, it's a 200-gallon tank that supplies it and fuels it, but the horsepower?
I just wonder what the despot readings are at 135 feet while it's running.
Well, the, the, does it, the generator, remember, is inside the equipment shelter, and it would be also suppressed as well. To partially answer the question, remember, there's 200 amp service to a wireless site, so it would be some level of generator, maybe a fourth of that, depending on how many users they had operating on the site at any given time. But the suppression is such that you wouldn't, you would actually hear less than you would a generator in somebody's backyard operating during a hurricane, because it would be within the structure with the sound suppression system.
Well, okay.
One, one last que- is that thoroughly mandated to have generators, backup generators in, in these units?
It is not yet. It is under, that is, there's an FCC rulemaking that was initiated after Katrina, and it's still something that's under consideration. AT&amp;T, for their part, in, in this area, the Outer Banks and in Hampton Roads, has a policy now, design sites with generators, just because they have to deploy generators so frequently to the area because of, of power outages, hurricanes, and storms. So, they've gone ahead and, and taken it upon themselves to make sure they have generators on site, as opposed to waiting until a storm and then deploying generators, which is how most everybody in the industry does it right now. But it's, it's not mandated yet, but I think, I think you will see that coming.
Do you, do you know if you have generators available at the current sites, at the water towers? And if so, does it provide power for, or can you provide power for all of the people that, that would reside on the tower? Or would they have to bring their own?
The water tank sites, because there are co-locations, typically, each carrier would sort of be left to their own devices as far as what they did. This site, because it's one that AT&amp;T's designing and building, you know, they could create a scenario where the generator is used by multiple users. But where you've got a, a water tank, you've got multiple users, all different installations on that water tank, so it's a little bit different of a structure, but it's certainly something that could be addressed as well.
Thank you.
What is the amperage draw of the antenna?
The, I'm going to ask our RF engineer to come up here, it's a, Bill, can you? And actually, I, Bill, go ahead and introduce yourself, and I'll point this out.
My name's Bill Schwartz-Mark, I'm here for AT&amp;T.
Could y'all speak in the white, please?
I reside in New Kent County, Virginia. The question, amperage draw of the antenna?
Yes.
Uh, the site's going to be drawing around 140 watts of power. And so, we have some reserve there from the 200-amp service. In, in case, you know, we get full capacity use.
But if you have additional users on there, they will have the same, they will have similar requirements?
Everyone would have their own probably 200-amp service.
Uh-huh.
We're not going to supply.
So, we might end up with three generators, diesel-driven generators?
Uh, that, that's possible, but all the generators nowadays, they do have suppress sound there. The shelter, I believe there's actually a separate room inside of the shelter that holds the generator, and it's more soundproofed. And of course, it has an exhaust vent and stuff, but normally, you can't already tell the generator's running, well, I've been at the sites myself, and I can't already tell that the generators are running.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
No.
Any further comments, Wes?
Yes, sir.
Any further comments on that?
No, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, there's no one else who's, because we've gone through everyone who's signed and testified, we close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. I've seen no one else wishing to speak. Provide the public one last opportunity to raise their hand and be recognized, if they did not get a chance to speak. Yes, sir. I just want to do, just get prepared the podium, please. Yeah. I want to make it clear, sir, if you're not testifying, you just have a comment?
No, I just have a comment. My name is John Boyle, I live at 2010th Avenue in Southern Shores. And I just came to the meeting tonight for informational purposes, trying to keep an open mind, and from everything I've seen, the, the only question I have in my mind centers around the potential impact on the valuation of the properties in close proximity. And I know Ms. Murphy furnished to the council some financial information, of which I'm not privy to. And so I would say it'd be extremely important for the council to examine that financial information, to ensure that you all feel that it's accurate. I know in a lot of transactions like this, for lack of a better word, more than one financial document is submitted, and you might get two appraisals, or you might get local appraisers to take a look at it, to confirm what AT&amp;T is saying. And that's the only comment I have.
Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, please, sir. This, this a question or a comment?
Uh, it's a comment. It has to do with the possibility of a flood down in that area. This is a flood zone, I believe, and there is diesel fuel in that building, and I was wondering about the possibility of spillage in a flood situation.
Just have a question, actually, a comment. Councilman Sanders, I'm Gary McDonald, 74 Trinity. Councilman Sanders commented about, I think from Wes, Area 12 in the recommendations, about a town, about who's responsible for removal. And there was a concern about who will own this long-term, and just out in the future to protect the town, I would ask, or think that you should look at adding language in there to also include the property owner, so that the town would not be obligated to remove this over time, and change that language in there. The other thing was on lock coverage. Are you using the roads to meet the lock coverage, and how's that going to be as far as flooding?
Thank you, sir. At this point, having closed the evidentiary portion of the hearing, I see a motion from council to take action on this matter, specifically whether or not to grant a conditional use permit to construct a new wireless telecommunications site at 148 A Ocean Boulevard in the ordinance section 36, that's 175, wireless telecommunications sites and towers as outlined in the staff report. Anybody in council deliberate?
Can the, the motion be as you stated it?
Well, that's the first part of the motion, and we're going to have to adopt specific findings in the report.
Exactly. We do that separately?
Yep. We'll incorporate that and do that.
And we would separately adopt, determine that it's consistent with the land use plan?
Yes.
Or is that a condition?
That's part of it, that's part of it.
That's, that's one of the conditions, is not, okay.
And just as a record, I suspect it'd be best that we vote on each one of those, A through D, on page two of the report.
A, A through D?
Yes, sir. First question, is there any discussion, though, about the application?
We can, well, I have a question. We can accept all the recommendations?
Yes, my suggestion would be that the motion incorporate by, by the staff, or prepared by Wes Askin on November 6, 2013, including but not limited to its recommendations.
Exactly. I understand. But in order to get us started, we first need a motion to approve.
Yes, sir. First, we need a motion to approve this conditional use permit.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the CUP-13-01.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second, the motion?
We want to talk about this. Who wants to start?
Well, I, I guess I can.
I would welcome that, George.
I believe that through various reasons, that the Civic Association went through an elaborate process to ask its membership whether or not they were in favor of having a cell phone tower, or going into a, an agreement with a cell phone tower company. 92% of the respondents voted yes, which tells me a large majority of the population in this town wants that cell phone tower. I think there is truth to the health and safety issues of having that cell phone tower to increase the service area for not only AT&amp;T, but three other wireless carriers.
I think, '06, all of them, they all, I won't say all, but the same numbers that I talked to are the same numbers that the Civic Association came up with, in terms of percentage, are in favor of having better cell service here in Southern Shores. And I think this starts to accomplish that process. So I'm in favor.
I agree. And I also remember back in, I wasn't sure of the year, so maybe it was starting in 2006, that the extensive work that the planning board had done in outlining what was the span of what acceptability we had for self-tower service, and where we didn't have it, where there were holes and gaps in it. They spent many, many hours and many months on working this. This was just not a quick decision that was put across, and I think it makes some sense. I agree with that.
Councilman Sanders, do you have something to say?
Well, you know, the lack of service in the area is well documented, has been complained about before this council, to individuals. I certainly see the, that as a part of the infrastructure utility is, this type of utility is necessary. I do have one question. If we approve conditional use, there are other processes that take place before actual construction, are there not? At which point, if we come up with any other questions or advisements, that they can be addressed?
Well, if you're gonna put conditions on this permit, there are 12, excuse me, 13 that have been recommended by staff and council's recommendation. Your attorney for conditions, do you adopt those conditions? If there are other conditions, reasonable conditions you would like to add, that needs to be done tonight?
Well, I guess my question is, there's, before actual construction, is there any other process that we go through as far as permitting?
No. I think that's what Wes was asking.
They will still have to apply for a building permit, and they will still have to apply for a zoning permit. As I noted earlier, any future applications or carriers would also have to apply for, which is a streamlined procedure, which is an administrative procedure. That meaning, they would have to obtain a building permit and a zoning permit. The zoning permit is issued by myself, the zoning administrator, and I do have the authority to impose certain conditions as needed to safeguard, as needed.
Okay, that was, that answers my question. Thank you.
It's been a long time coming. We worked on this now for seven years. There's no way the town can avoid having a cell tower in town if it meets the requirements of our ordinance. So I think that I'm ready to approve this application, along with the other four council members. And the motion is on the table, and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? I must say that we have an opportunity later to go over each of the conditions recommended, and we can add or delete, I suppose, from those. That discussion is yet to come. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on what you mean by that, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, you've got the motion on the table to approve the permit. Then we're gonna go through, and we're gonna specifically move on items A through D.
Yes.
Which are required findings. As part of that, we're also going to make a call that we are incorporating by reference in its entirety in the staff report, including 13 conditions. If there are other conditions that your honors would like to add, you need to talk about that now, so that can be done as part of this motion in some parts.
Counsel, I would ask you to discuss the conditions that are recommended by planning board and by staff. And if you have any questions on those conditions, state them, and we can modify them or change them.
Right. In my suggestion is.
Or drop them.
Correct. And my suggestion is that we, that you all vote on the motion to approve the conditional use permit, and then we go through specifically and adopt A, B, C, and D, and then we get into the conditions and talk about which of those you wish to adopt or add to.
Yeah. Well, I thought that's what I asked you, if we can do. But then we can go over the conditions one by one.
Yes, sir.
We can.
Yes.
And we can modify those conditions.
Long as your modifications are reasonable to the conditions reasonable, yes, sir.
Yes, including deleting them.
Absolutely.
Exactly. That's what I thought was going on. Okay. Then we're ready for a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It is approved.
Next thing, your honor, we need to make specifically as part of that motion to just approve that you all moved to find that the applicant has met the requirements of the application provisions of the town charter pertaining to zoning subdivision chapter and all other applicable ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is subparagraph A on the second page of the staff report. We have a second on that. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Next, that you all, as part of this motion, find that the use is proposed will perform with the town's land use plan and will be compatible with the area in which it is to be located and developed according to the conditions specified in the chapter initially required by the town council as authorized by the chapter.
So moved. Second.
We have a second. No discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. C?
That the use will not materially endanger the public health and safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan submitted that you make that finding.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. D?
That you find that the use is proposed will not overburn the town volunteer fire department and firefighting capabilities, and the county water supply capacity to the town as said facilities and capabilities will exist on the completion date of the conditional use for which the application is made.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Question, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Having approved this application and permit, and specifically made those findings, your honors now may consider the 13 recommended conditions be placed on this approval, and the others that you may wish to discuss. And I'll make your honors' pleasure, but what easy way to do it might be to take them one at a time.
Yes, I think, I think for the benefit of the public, we should take them one time, and they should be restated.
Now, the first recommended condition is that, that your honors would move on whether or not to make this a condition in the permit. Condition one in the recommendation of the staff report, one, the conditional use permit shall expire if the improvements permitted are not completely constructed within 24 months of the date of the approval of a building permit.
And we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A second. Don't, building permits ordinarily expire at 18 months?
Yes, sir. You say 18, 181, or 180, yeah, that's right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Recommendation two?
Recommendation, condition number two, the tower shall provide space for at least three providers plus space for emergency communication and that is used by the town police department, so the two volunteer fire department would need it.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Condition number three, town council, consider publicly, maintain roadways as providing additional property for calculation of setbacks, or reduce the setback requirement to one-third of the height of the tower.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question, I think it's of Wes. It's to be built to 135 mile an hour.
Yes, sir. The miles that were mentioned require that we receive engineer certification that the structure can withstand sustained winds of 135 miles per hour.
But if it fails, it will fall within 45 feet of the base of the tower.
Correct. You, as the town council, have the authority to waive the one-to-one setback requirement to one-third of the height of the tower if a North Carolina registered engineer also demonstrates that the tower is designed to fall within the one-third setback. In this case, I believe it's around 43 feet, and we do have that, that was submitted as part of the record.
We don't have any need to actually move as a council to approve the one-third.
I believe the ordinance states that it is at your discretion to waive, to have it one-way or the other.
Well, must we waive it formally?
I would defer to Mr. Hornthal, but I would most likely to be. Yeah, that's a specific condition that needs to be adopted, if that's what you're doing.
If we adopt this, we have waived the requirement.
Well, the way I word it is, it seems like the choice is still there.
You could, yeah, you could reword it and say that the town council has waived the one-to-one setback and has reduced it to one-third of the height of the proposed tower.
Well, I think it has to be reworded.
Yeah.
Because it, as stated, is not clear.
Yeah, I agree. For the record, I would state that the town council consider publicly, maintain roadways as providing additional property for calculation of setbacks, and reduces setback requirement to one-third of the height of the tower.
And reduces?
That, we would, staff would agree with that, in that I believe the ordinance states that it's and/or, so that would work.
We're either saying it's reduced or it's not reduced.
It could be either.
I know, but I thought you were saying that you've got all the signatures required for it to be reduced.
We do.
That the engineer.
That was all submitted.
Could we, could the motion read, the town council?
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Will you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I will.
Let us work this thing out.
I can.
Would staff be comfortable if it read, the town council, reduce the setback requirement to one-third of the height of the tower?
Yes, sir.
That would be the motion. A condition, it would not be the motion, it would be an adopted condition that the town council reduce the setback requirement to one-third of the height of the tower.
How about reduces? And that would only be applicable to?
This application.
This application?
Yes.
Yes. Is it clear now?
Yes.
Except I think you should say, I hate to be linguistic, but I should say reduces, not reduce.
Sir.
I said reduces, we're reducing for this, you should say reduces.
This is.
Yes. Right.
So moved. Yeah, we still have a second. We have a second. Okay. Are we clear on this?
Yes.
All those in favor of adopting recommendation three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Done. Number four.
Number four, that you adopt a condition, an electrical and telephone line serving the wireless telecommunications site shall be installed underground in accordance with existing service.
So moved. Second.
With regard to recommendation five, that you adopt the condition, sound emission devices.
We need to vote. We need to discuss and vote number four.
We didn't vote on that one, Philip. Because I was, I was thinking.
Yeah, I have a question on number four as well.
Larry has a question, too.
You have a question on number four, Jody?
No, Larry knows.
Larry does.
Yes. The electrical lines in that area, I believe in passing, are above ground now. So it would be my understanding, then, that they would go into the ground at the nearest utility pole and stay underground till it gets to the wireless facility?
Is it shown on the plan?
Because it's gonna be served from an above-ground power line, I believe, rather than underground. So it'll have to go underground someplace.
So is your question regarding the point of existence service at what point?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I'm, what I'm getting to is, I would hate to see a power line draped between an existing power pole and to feed the tower, and then the tower have its lines going between the utility building and the tower itself underground. I would rather see all of it underground.
I think there, we're protected as this is written. It says, "The line serving the wireless site, the electrical has to go underground at the point they pick it up."
Okay.
Wouldn't you think so? Or is it shown on the plan?
Couldn't see it.
Can anybody read that plan?
No, it's not there, but couldn't Wes enforce that when the building permit is issued? Couldn't you handle that?
They would have to meet all the requirements from state building code as well as the national electric code, as opposed to building itself.
Okay.
So could you force that issue and have it exactly, so you see no extra poles, et cetera, and it works without, all underground?
We would expect a rule receiving.
And if the wires, the signal wires that come down the center of the tower are underground over to the utility building, where the switches are?
I don't think so.
This is more than that would have to be.
Okay.
Is that possible?
Okay, we square it away now?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second.
It's possible?
On item, recommendation number four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item five, recommendation five.
That sound emission devices such as alarms, bells, buzzers, and the like are not to be used.
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have it. Item six.
That the applicant maintain landscaping requirements in accordance with Section 36 dash 175, C, 2, I, and C.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Item seven, adding a condition that with the exception of black hole lighting, all lighting in the wireless telecommunications site shall be shielded and shall comply with provisions for outdoor lighting, contained, Section 36 dash 160C.
I so move.
Second.
Anyone have a problem with this?
I'm saying.
Just, just, just a moment.
I'm sorry.
Have to vote on it, sir.
You're right, sir.
We have to be legal.
Very correct.
It's funny telling a lawyer.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item eight.
That you adopt a condition, any proposed signage to be installed on wireless telecommunications site shall be in accordance with Section 36 dash 175, C, 2, K. Any future signage on the. Any future signage on the scene you wall must be in accordance with town sign orders.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Number nine.
That you adopt as a condition, item number nine, that the wireless telecommunications site shall be developed in accordance with the town's flood damage prevention ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
That you adopt as a condition, item number ten, the wireless telecommunications site shall be developed in accordance with town's lot and starbord ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same time. Done.
That you adopt as a condition, this ordinance, item number eleven, recommendation number eleven, that an annual renewal permit must be obtained within three hundred and sixty-five days of the issuance of the significant occupancy related to the building permit. Annual renewal permit shall then be required within three hundred and sixty-five days from the previously issued annual renewal permit.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, number twelve.
That you adopt, recommendation twelve is a condition, this permit, that if the wireless telecommunications site is not operated for one hundred and eighty continuous days in a twelve-month period, it shall be considered abandoned, and the facility owner shall be responsible for the removal of all structures and equipment on the site within ninety days of receiving such certification by the town.
So moved. Second.
I have a question. How does one know whether or not it is operated, or is not operated, for one hundred and eighty continuous days in a twelve-month period? How does the town know that?
It would be a lack of service, and you would have to work with the property facility owner and AT&amp;T to monitor that.
It's possible that the civic association would not get their monthly payment.
It'd just be sort of complaint driven.
Also.
Yeah, that might be a hint.
That would be a good...
That would be a good hint.
But I don't think that monthly payment seriously inhibits AT&amp;T from doing it.
It's assuming AT&amp;T...
Doing it's, what's best for its business.
But it's also assuming that AT&amp;T will own the telephone tower.
But if we're making this a continuous use, then the administrative procedures have to be developed to carry it out, so somebody has to work out the way to do that.
Yeah. Just curious, did we have a motion to approve? Did we have a second? Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Number thirteen.
That the council adopts a condition, this permit, the applicant must strictly abide by all other requirements of the town code, and it's also to comply with all other local, state, federal requirements.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sure there's no discussion on this one. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Before we consider additional conditions at this point, since you all would not believe any of the recommendations, I would recommend that you move to incorporate by reference the staff report into this condition for that.
So moved.
Your staff report is amended.
Yes.
Larry, so moved, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'd like to bring to the council's attention something the town manager and I have been discussing that gives us some pause, and it may require an additional condition. Item number one says that the conditional use permit shall expire if the improvements permitted are not completely constructed within twenty-four months of the date of the approval of a building permit. Item number twelve says that if the wireless communications site is not operated for one hundred and eighty continuous days in a twelve-month period, it shall be considered abandoned. However, there's no condition to address the circumstance whereby the applicant does not ever apply for a building permit, and we might suggest that you add a condition requiring the applicant to apply for a building permit within a certain amount of time, maybe a year, six months, whatever your pleasure is.
That's not in the existing code already, is there, that if you apply this?
What's concerning is just being the devil's advocate, which is what lawyers do. If the conditional use permit shall expire if the improvements permitted are not completely constructed within twenty-four months of the date of the approval of a building permit, and a building permit is never applied for, arguably that this permit goes on and on and on and on and on indefinitely. And if that's the council's pleasure, so be it, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, that that potentially is not addressed. One way might be to add a fourteenth condition that says that the conditional use permit shall expire if the improvements permitted, if a building, if an application for a building permit for the improvements permitted is not made or filed within twelve months of the date of this day. The issuance of the permit.
I so move.
Okay, I'll second it. And the other reason I like the idea is because I don't, I'm superstitious, I don't like thirteen, so fourteen makes it good.
I move it within twelve months.
It's been seconded.
And I seconded it.
Okay, we have two seconds, that's good. We have a motion, a strong second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have fourteen. Counsel?
That's all that the town manager and I had found.
Counsel, this is your opportunity.
I had indicated earlier that, or questioned if there was an opportunity to add any additional conditions at a later date, and actually, in, in going back over this, as far as I'm concerned, condition, the, condition D, recommendation thirteen, addressed the concerns that I had, so I don't think I will be proposing any further conditions.
I've been wrestling, counsel, since I received this package over the issue of, when is a flagpole a flagpole? To me, a flagpole that never flies a flag is simply a pole. We can call it a stealth flagpole, we can call it a stealth pole. I've been debating with myself whether or not we should make issue of flying the flag and what flag a condition. And I would like to hear if any other council member has some similar views.
I've also thought about that. I, I don't know that the council could impose that, since it's between the landlord and the tower company. I would suggest that the council make a recommendation to the civic association as to their pleasure, and we could, we could recommend that they consider flying a US flag on certain holidays, or for example, if they want to fly it year-round to have it lighted, or to consider having another type of flag put up. But I would rather see that as a form of a recommendation to the civic association from the council, rather than put it on this conditional use.
I like to imagine that ninety-two percent of the population of civic association decided they'd like to have a, a tower, and I would like to imagine that a percentage of the civic association of all composed of mostly adults can figure out what they'd like to flag for their own, for that particular property that they have. So I would think that the civic association, I believe they are going to canvass their membership, send out an entire questionnaire, asking them what they would like to do with that flagpole, what like to fly from that flagpole, et cetera, and they can decide with that what they would like to do, and I think that, that is how I'd like to leave it, let, give them the power and the opportunity to do that with what they want to do.
I have a question for Ms. Murphy, is the tower built with lanyards and pulleys and all that's required to, to raise and lower a flag?
It would be, yeah, the, the stealth facility is designed with the lanyards and the pulleys to, to raise and lower a flag, so what type of flag and whether or not it's raised and lowered, as was indicated, would be up to the civic association.
Is it the, what we look on as a standard way of raising the flag, a pulley at the top of the pole and some long lanyards? That's, that's the way it's done?
Yes, it's designed just like a regular flagpole.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say on this?
Personally, I don't believe it's appropriate to try to address that within the conditional use, since it, since it, it doesn't really address the need for or the construction of, of this facility. It's, it's a condition that has been passed on to the property owner, so I really don't see that it has any bearing in this document.
Well, we, we could put a condition on that requires AT&amp;T to fly, even though they have an agreement, but I think I'm going the way that Councilman Mahon suggests, let's leave it. Let's leave it.
I agree.
For the time being. Let's leave it for the time. Anyone else have any ideas?
Attorney, did we adopt them all? We did, we moved on them as amended.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, then we're finished.
Yes, sir, and I'd like to thank you all for your patience in working through this complicated process, which you have to do for the first time now, and for sure you move on to the next agenda.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
We took two minutes.
We're gonna take a break and leave.
Oh, boy. That was fun.
Two accidents, two years coming to me.
Three.
We read that for a long time.
Counsel, we have several items of business remaining, new business, and for under new business, A, B, C, we will turn to our manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item Roman numeral ten A, this is a, the first recommendation of the evening for an amendment to the capital reserve ordinance, which you adopted on June eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, it's under tab three. And for general accounting principle purposes, this recommendation is coming to you in the form of an amendment to that capital reserve ordinance, but it includes three individual budget amendments within the, the action that's recommended that you take. And under tab three, the first sheet is the actual amendment to the capital reserve ordinance that would be accomplished by the adoption of the three succeeding budget amendments. And if I could just get you to turn to budget amendment number one, which is part of the amendment, this is a paper entry on, on the Juniper Bridge. As I have notified each of you, we did, and receive an invoice from the Department of Transportation for the cost incurred in order to replace the covert bridge at Juniper Trail. And of course, as you recall, that project started about twenty-four months ago, it was an agreement with DOT for the design and construction, and recall, we did have, DOT did have to go back and get one of its contractors to go back and replace some tieback work in the bridge. The actual cost came out to be three hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and six dollars. If you'll recall, the original estimate was two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, so there is an overage of one oh six, eight oh six, and hence, the reason behind two separate budget amendments. The budget amendment number one is for, to account for the cost over the original estimate, and the second would be for the entire amount, which would include the two hundred and fifty-five, which was an original, a setup as an original debt instrument because of the fact that DOT was going to carry the debt. So by adopting budget amendment number one and number two, we would satisfy the accounting principle requirements, and there will be authorization to pay the three hundred and sixty-one thousand eight oh six out of the capital reserve fund.
Okay.
Okay, that's the explanation for budget amendment number one and two. Budget amendment number three, um, this is, the, pertains to the police garage training building that you authorized in your budget adoption in June. Recall that the original amount that was authorized in the capital reserve ordinance was one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. After design and placing it out for bid, determinations were made that forty thousand more dollars is going to be needed to accomplish that project, so it is the recommendation of the budget officer that forty thousand dollars be included, be now transferred into the capital reserve fund, which you set up by ordinance, so that is a forty thousand dollar budget amendment. So all three of the budget amendments, one, two, and three, would be accomplished by adopting the overall amendment, or recommended amendment to the capital reserve ordinance that's on the first page.
Are you saying that we don't need to adopt the amendments one by one?
You can if you like, or you can just adopt the amendment which would include one, two, and three. I would recommend go ahead and adopt all, each individual one, but just bear in mind that the amendment sheet is part of the transaction itself, the top sheet.
Exactly. What's your pleasure on amendment one, counsel?
I move that we approve amendment one.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
There any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. What's your pleasure, counsel, on budget amendment number two?
I move that we approve budget amendment number two.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. What is your pleasure on the budget amendment number three?
I'll move to approve a budget number, amendment number three.
We have a, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just, just for the, for the record, the, the effect of the three actions, of course, in effect, accomplish what is on the cover sheet of amend, the actual amendment. Alright, so we'll turn... All right, so we'll turn to the next recommendation, recommended budget amendment is budget amendment number four. This accounts for the police department's interest in grants that it received. The grants were awarded to the town for the purchase of security cameras for the town hall complex and also for a radar trailer. And the grants are seventy-five percent reimbursable to the town, however, that is reimbursement grants, so hence the recommended budget amendment, so that we can pay those out. And that is budget amendment number four. And as you can see, the twenty-five percent, excuse me, the, the undesignated fund balance is where we withdraw the, the funds from to cash flow, the, the initial outlay.
The one thousand nine thirty-one is all that comes from the undesignated fund.
You see the two thousand four eighty-four below that as well.
I see. Any questions on this, counsel?
No.
I move approval of budget amendment number four.
Second.
Any discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And finally, Mr. Mayor, the last one is budget amendment number five. Recall in June when we, when I recommended the fiscal year's budget to you, there was no anticipated revenues shown from the Dare County Stabilization Commission's funds at that time. I believe the minutes will show we did have a discussion and that I would come back to you at some point in the year with either a recommendation or discussion about a plan. Since the hiring of the new public works director, we have had some time and resources to discuss a possible beach stabilization project for the year, using the funds that are available for the Town of Southern Shores, in the Shoreline Commission funds, of course, which come from the Dare County occupancy tax revenues. The amount that's shown in this budget amendment number five, sixty-five thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars, is what is available to the Town of Southern Shores this year. They must, we've informed now by the Dare County Finance Office, we must spend all that by the end of the fiscal year, or, yes, by the end of the fiscal year, in order to accumulate the next appropriation to Southern Shores, which would be approximately twenty-four thousand dollars for the next year. So we have not spent this money in several years, and here's what we have. We've been able to develop a proposed program or project for beach stabilization that would spend a good portion of this, if not all of it. We are proposing that we plant beach grass the length of the five point two miles where needed, and also fertilize that three times, and also plant sea oats during the spring as well. So we would have one planting of beach seagrass where needed, two fertilizations, and then a planting of sea oats in, in the spring, and another fertilization. We have that project out for proposal now, but we do project that it would take up most of this money, if not all of this money. We're in the process right now of notifying the beachfront owners that this is going to happen starting in January, and to encourage beachfront owners to install any sand fencing that they want to install, so that this does not inhibit that. That's the project. And with these funds, of course, it's an in and out transaction. We're getting the funds from the, from Dare County, and then we were paying out for the actual project. But it would require a budget amendment for us to be able to initiate this and carry it out during this fiscal year. So that, that is the recommendation. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions if anybody has any detailed questions on why we're planning on doing it.
Will these plantings be done on the east side of the dune, on the ocean side of the dune, mostly?
Mostly right on the peak of the dune, of the peak of the existing dune. We've had two rides, two, two rides, north to south, one with a consultant, and they would be basically on the peak of the dune. And you see beach grass in some locations that would not be planted. I believe the estimate is, out of the five point two miles, there's a good fifty percent that needs to be planted with beach grass. So that's what we're basing the cost estimates on. And then sea oats would be sporadic, because there are some sea oats stands throughout the town, and they would plant those where needed. And then, hopefully, there would be three, enough money to take care of three fertilizations. That's what we're hoping. This would be similar to one of the other municipalities, actually Town of Duck, that encourages beachfront owners to do their own sand fencing, and they provide destabilization with plantings using the Shoreline Commission money.
I move that we approve budget number five.
Second.
Any discussion here? I have a question of Jody, I think. Or Peter. Where does it say that we must use these monies in the year they are passed to us?
Mr. Mayor, this, this is a, as you know, it's local legislation, and it authorizes the Board of Commissioners to basically make the own rule, the board's rules in handling this money. So we have been subject to the beck and call of the Board of Commissioners on how this money's been handled over the last five or six years, and this is one of those instances. Basically, it's, it's a unilateral situation.
Okay. There, you're saying they call the shots. We don't have anything to say about it.
That's basically it.
That's correct. We give our opinion.
Well, is the beach nourishment money that Kitty Hawk and Kildell Hills are going for, and Duck, handled the same way?
Yes, sir, it is. We, as I reported a couple of meetings ago, I've been involved with the managers as they plan those projects to make sure we totally understand how the funding is being evolved, is evolving.
Okay.
And it is. The finance, the Dare County Finance Officer and the Dare County Manager basically come up with the plan, and those numbers that you see out there are basically what the county has been able to work out.
The difference with this beach planting was originally it started out as being the interest from that sales tax that was rescinded, which was divvied up to each town to do just this, beach plant, you know, planting grasses and fences, et cetera. And was, and therefore, while they had a big pot of money associated with that, we were able to accumulate it if we didn't use it. Well, that big pot of money is reducing, not necessarily because of their projects, but just because of the way we've been spending it so far. So now they're changing the rules on whether you can accumulate it or not accumulate it. And so personally, since we haven't done this for two years, we need to do it while we can.
Yep. Okay. Any, any other questions? Wonderings? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's the end of the budget amendment, all the proposals.
Counsel, I personally put this item B on the agenda. It's a matter that has come up in the last couple of months and has been talked about at some length among staff and the boat club, Civic Association. But I think that counsel needs to address it. The fact is, the boat channel from the marina to Kerthog Sound has shoaled to less than four feet at normal water level, between markers three and four. And this is since the channel was dredged during phase one a couple of years ago. It's attributed to Hurricane Irene and Sandy. Our dredger, who's working in town now, and I must say he's working very effectively, has quoted a price of thirty-three thousand dollars, plus or minus, I don't remember the exact number, to dredge the under, the area under his current contract. He already has dredged some minor shoaling that took place almost at the entry of the The question, I guess, that's in our mind is, does the town assume ownership of this channel and take responsibility for keeping it open and funding it? Or do we call on the other, on other major users of the channel to share in the cost of keeping that channel open? Other major users, of course, the major users are our own boat club people and Martin's Point. Significant number of, of Martin's Point boaters in Gingwijk Creek. So I just wanted to lay it before the, the channel, see if there's any discussion, any ideas you have, or how we might go about resolving the issue. I must say that we must come to some conclusion before the current dredger gets out of town, because mobilization costs are a significant part of a small dredging operation, and this shoaling that we have between three and, and five would be a small operation. So the mobilization would be significantly, a significant part of the total cost, and that certainly would be more than thirty-three thousand dollars. I just wanted to share that with you. You have any ideas where we should go from here and how we should go about it?
Well, as you may know, I've got some very strong feelings on this one. And I do for a couple of reasons. Number one, it was when we did the dredging of the channel this last time, it had been twenty years since we had dredged, and somehow or other, we were able to get along, boats were able to get through, things were able to happen. It just bothers me that when we just finished dredging this a year ago, year and a half, two years ago, now all of a sudden, we want to dredge it again. And I understand all that about mill, mill wheel and cost and all that sort of thing. That's number one. Number two, it's my understanding there's only maybe a handful of boats that can't get out through there at their normal rate of speed. And they, to me personally, we've been in voting for a lot, number of years. You can adjust, you can adapt to it. Number three, I really, I was very concerned, and I fought very hard through this first phase of training, that Martin's Point should share the cost. And we just did not go to them in time to get them to participate. They participated in the dredging a long, 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 long time ago, twenty-some years ago. And I think they should be a part of it. And I think this whole discussion should be a piece of, when we finish this canal dredging, we have to come up with a maintenance plan of how we're going to manage it in the future. And I think this should be a strong piece of it. And I think we should get the stakeholders there, and I agree, it's the boat club, the Civic Association, Martin's Point, the Coast Guard, because the Coast Guard auxiliary uses it. And I think we should have some kind of an understanding worked out with all of them. I don't think the town should own the responsibility for dredging that particular strip. But I think we have a way that we could work it out as part of the plan for maintaining the, the canals in the future. I think a group should put together to, to discuss what that should be.
Who do you, who do you think should lead that group?
Well, if we make it part of the maintenance of our canals, then we would be leading it. And whether that ends up being Rachel or Wes, I don't know. Well, let's just say it's, it's, it's Peter's problem. Peter would be leaving it and putting it together from the standpoint of how do we make a plan? And this should be a piece of it. And maybe we do a memorandum of understanding with them, an agreement that when we, when we have to do the maintenance of the channel, because at that point in time, we should also be adopting, do we do this every two years, every three years, every time somebody just feels we should? And then when we dredge, does Martin's Point pay ten percent, twenty percent? We pay such percent? We should just work out all of those details.
I don't think, I don't believe you can schedule maintenance dredging. Shoaling happens, as we just found out. So...
You can't schedule, but can you, can develop a plan as when you're looking at it?
Well, I understand, I understand that. And I, I agree with that wholeheartedly. But when you say we've just dredged it, and why are we dredging it again? It doesn't make sense to me, Jody. We have to dredge the canal when it needs, we should dredge the canal when it needs to be dredged.
Question is, what height do we need?
Exactly.
Does four, does four feet, or whatever it is, take care of most of the people?
Exactly. We dredged it hydraulically to six feet. Isn't that right, Tom?
Yes, sir.
To six feet. We didn't dredge it to six feet because of the draft of the boats that were using it.
Well, I understand that.
We dredged it for, to generate flow as the wind, wind tides. What do we need as an objective depth of that channel for boats? I don't know. If, if you want to give them a depth of four feet at low water, whatever that definition is, you have to dredge deeper than four feet. I would just like to see the whole thing attacked and counsel be given an opportunity either by ordinance or something, a memorandum of understanding, have a position on the maintenance of that channel.
I, I guess I need to ask some questions before I fully understand it. The town owns the, the canals, so we have the right to go in and dredge those whenever we can afford it. We don't own that channel. That is owned, I guess it's public domain property.
It's, it's public trust water. The state owns the ground, and it's navigable water. The state owns the ground, as I understand it, under all navigable waters.
Does the state?
Well, this area that you guys are talking about lays beneath the Kerthog Sound. It is not controlled or owned by the town in any way, so it's not an asset of the town. It arguably is an asset to the town, but it would also be an asset to...
So are we in violation of any state or federal ordinances or laws by going out and dredging or doing changes to the bottoms of public waters to accommodate boats that want to come in out of a private marina? And if not, why can't we involve the Corps of Engineers, since it is public property? They do keep a channel open down at the, the, the bridge. I mean, doesn't the Corps of Engineers have some responsibility here? Doesn't the state have some responsibility here?
No.
Since it is a public waters?
I don't think so.
Well, without doing any further research, I can't answer your question as to whether or not you would run afoul of any state or federal laws to dredging any part of the sound that the town does not own, which this clearly is within that. But I would recommend that, that no such action be taken here tonight until we can decide that. I think that's a, that's an important threshold as to whether or not you're even allowed to dredge this or not. I don't know the answer to that.
I think the answer is, I believe the answer is, today, the boat club would not be permitted to establish that channel. Recall what happened to a contractor who wanted to build a channel up in Corolla, and he couldn't get a permit to do so, so he surreptitiously brought in a tug and blew the channel out with the tug.
I think he's wearing orange.
And he paid very handsomely for that. And it's, it's camo, I think. Camo, wildlife?
I don't, I don't know. That's the reason I ask questions.
But the channel now is designated on the NOAA chart as private. The markers are designated as private. The markers are designated as private. It shows up in the Coast Guard light list for only one marker, and that is the one that is lighted. That's number two, isn't it, Tom?
Actually, both of them are lighted.
They're both?
Yes, sir.
Well, the Coast Guard light list, I found, I can find only the one listed.
It shows one light.
Yeah, it only lists one light. And I think anybody that believes that the Coast Guard is going to make a contribution that has got maintenance of that channel because of the Coast Guard auxiliary is being very fensible.
Yeah, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
There's another issue that I'd like to raise, and that is that $0.33 is, I mean, sorry, $33,000 is a third of a penny in taxes to be raised. The taxes are coming from the town's coffers that is raised from the population, all the people in this town. This is a project, as far as I can see, whereby we're asking people in this town to pay for something for AIDS, private individuals and organizations. Martin's Point is a private development. Martin's Point Yacht Club is a private yacht club that uses the gene guide to go out and through that channel. That channel and gene guide is used by commercial interests to do all sorts of things there, and they go in and out. And the civic association is a private organization, and its boat club subsidiary is a private organization. And there are many people in this town that do not boat, will never use a boat, do not belong to the boat club, and we are asking them to pay for an area that the town doesn't own. I understand if it owns the canals and asking people to pay for that even though they don't use it, because I guess they have roads we ask them to pay for and they don't use some of the roads. But I think that one needs to really start to look at this closely when the public and private people are using an area that we don't own, and yet we maintain the idea that because some can't get their boats through, this town should be paid in that. I would entertain the idea that maybe the boat club should pay the $33,000 and we'll do it and we'll make the arrangements for them. I mean, I have a, I think it needs some exploration.
Well, what I'm asking, what I'm really hoping or asking for is, how do we go about resolving this whole issue?
Well, we have a planning board. Let them start setting it up and start working this whole issue out.
You think it's a suitable assignment to the planning board?
It's a, come up with a plan. Come up with a plan. I mean, they plan, we have a planner. Plan, plan to figure out, how do you do this and lay it all out? Because, you know what? We pay $33,000 tomorrow, they go out there, boom, 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 water will move this way, that way, and I bet you within a year, somebody will be complaining they can't get their boat through. And then what are we going to do a year from now or two? Well, I won't be doing anything. I'll be trying to get my boat through. No, but...
Sure.
But I mean, you've established a precedent.
Stay on your, stay on your point, Tom.
Yeah, I am. The point is that, because if we're going to be reactive every time there's a complaint, we need a plan. We need to have a plan.
Exactly. And your point is that you think it's a suitable assignment for the planning board?
I think the planning board, because their first part is called plan, I think they should be able to plan this.
But if I may interject a few things. Number one, this isn't the first time I've seen this discussion. I saw it in the 80s, I saw it in the 90s, and then I saw it at the very beginning of my first term on council. And the answer to the question is none of the above. The Coast Guard doesn't own the channel, the state doesn't claim the channel, the federal government and the Corps of Engineers is not going to claim the channel. And if, personally, I believe that the discussion that we're in right now creates somewhat of a conundrum in that we're currently spending millions of dollars to create a channel of our own through our canals at a depth of five feet, and we're discussing whether we should ever, never, or possibly whatever. As far as dredging that channel, it would seem to me that the whole purpose of the project that we're involved in now would be sort of negated if we allow the main channel to shoal up and land lock our canal system. It's, I just think it's kind of odd that we're getting to this type of discussion at this point.
I don't think it's odd if we proposed the entire dredging system was never discussed about a boating discussion. It was a health and safety discussion of how it was sold and the fact that this is a waterway of drainage systems and we need to keep it clean because there's disease and we require movement, we need to drain it better. That was the primary way that that whole dredging system got but through, not regarding can you get your boat out or not in order to satisfy the remainder of the people who weren't on canals and didn't want to pay that kind of money. And that's how it's written.
But notwithstanding all that, we did the town dredge hydraulically the entire length of the channel.
True.
To that extent.
And was permitted to do so. Has not been charged with any crime.
Permission to the voyage, I have not received, so that's a time when that's safe or not.
Sir?
We have additional time when that's safe or not.
Yeah.
So in other words, the permit doesn't expire. We can go out there and apply for a Kama touch-up like we did. They'll, we can do that safe.
It's a five-year.
Yeah, we would just be giving Kama notice. If the council wanted dredging to occur under that permit, just notify them for the maintenance portion.
I saw Larry shaking his head yes at the idea of the assignment to the planning board.
Yes, you did.
And I heard George speaking very positively in favor of that.
Peter's got a...
Mayor, may I comment on that?
Yeah?
I did, in the previous, some of our previous discussions with individuals, if the council, in the third quarter of the year, whenever, wanted us, staff to proceed with that, I did say that certainly I would facilitate trying to get the parties to the table. I agree that that's the first step is to get whatever parties we identify who use the channel to the table, and I would certainly facilitate that, being the yacht, the Martin's Point Yacht Club, which basically, we're told, the whole association makes the call over there, the Coast Guard Auxiliary, Southern Shores Boat Club, and Southern Shore Civic Association, and us. And I think that's what we need to do. I mean, that would be my recommendation, that discussion.
That would be the way to start.
That would be a start. And that way, we'd know who is interested in participating or not.
I would like to see that tied in, though, with the overall maintenance dredging plan. To me, that's the only way it really makes sense to say the town planners are going to do it as a piece of that.
There is some sense of urgency, I think, however, since if we were to decide to have the current dredger go out there and do some work after he's finished doing his contracted work, he would have to do it before he leaves town with all of his equipment.
Yeah.
Or pay him again to come back in and do it, which would cost a lot more, so...
At this point in time, it would be the latter. He has another contract, he was not interested in doing this as of this week. He's got another contract he has to fill. So actually, we did a contract with him or somebody else locally to do it.
Right, so that's a moot point.
Moot point. I love to wear that.
Yes, that's been ongoing. He's basically, the $33,000 is a stale quote at this point.
So the current contractor couldn't actually dredge it for us anyway?
That's correct.
I wish I'd started the conversation with that.
I'm surprised you hear that.
Now, he is, the only way he could honor the $33,000, it was if it were to be done within his current contract period and if he still had loading equipment at the Sassafras Lane site. All that's gone now. He cannot honor the $33,000 quote now because his equipment would have to be remobilized in his, in the contract period. He's got another contract waiting for him, is what he's informed us.
Okay.
Okay. What shall we do, counsel? So we ask town manager to follow through and try to get everybody to say...
Yes.
Yep, makes sense.
Come back with a report, and then we'll decide what the next step will be.
Yes.
Everybody agree?
Sure.
Okay.
I will do my best to get them to the table.
Town manager, you have any...
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think Councilman-elect Leo Holland mentioned the fact that we will be on Destination Dare's video channel 20 next month. Our segment will be the Town of Southern Shores, Southern Shore Civic Association, and the Check Out Property Owners Association, our various histories and how we work together for the community. So it should be a very interesting video. We've seen the raw footage already. I think it's going to be a good one. Very briefly on the canals, the contractor is on the west to east segment, east of the Tall Pine Bridge and the canals that flow to the, are situated to the north of that. He anticipates finishing by next Friday, meaning Friday week, those segments, and to be able to be on the north-south Long Canal the week following. So he's about, our estimate is he's about eight days ahead of schedule right now. We'd like to announce to you, they will be dredging the day after Thanksgiving. So they continually, they asked me, would that be a problem? Did not think it would be because they want to get finished as quickly as we want them to be finished as well. So they will be dredging that Friday as well. So right now, we're looking at about eight days ahead of schedule. The street repairs, we continue to look at, I believe we did have a report that the second, excuse me, the last two of the major capital repairs, we had to have surveying done. That's been finished, and we're looking at some title work now as to the original plat for the developer in the hopes that there might be some drainage easements on paper for these two streets that we had not been aware of before. And if that is the case, that would help us out with distance and making those repairs. The first one being, of course, the North Dune Loop situation up there, and the other being on North Dogwood. We are working with the contractor who performed the improvements on Deer Path and Gravy Pond. I did send council members individually copies before of the warrant, the various written warranties for those that work. And we have been constantly working with the contractor for the repair, about the repairs that needed to be made, both on Gravy Pond and Deer Path. And hopefully, in the next 10 days, we'll have a final document whereby the warranty has been amended to account for the final repair, the final repairs of the fails that have occurred on those streets. So it's not something that we have sat on. This has been high on the radar screen for the last six months. It's just been a matter of evaluating what was going to fail and when was going to fail. And at this point, I believe we do have a better idea, and the contractor does as well, is what's going on there so that we can wrap that up and put it in a final plan to fix. The rebuild work on the streets, also, we're looking at, we're having some title work performed by the town attorney in the hopes that there might be some drainage easements from the original developers' plats on Duckwoods Drive as well. If that is the case, with that narrow white away there, that would be favorable to us in developing stormwater. If that's not the case, we're going to go ahead and put a plan together to do overlay work on those designated areas without the further lateral work. I did want to announce to you as well that town hall will be closed next Monday in observance of Veterans Day. And the town is co-sponsoring with the Knights of Columbus, the annual Veterans Day ceremony that will occur at the Flagpole Pavilion at the 11th hour on the 11th day, that day. So 11:00 a.m. there will be our Veterans Day ceremony, and we do have a speaker that we're excited about. It is retired Coast Guard Captain Mark Rose, who is a Southern Shores resident, and he's agreed to speak. So I hope we'll have a nice turnout. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Questions to the manager?
Just one on that Destination Dare. Are you going to send out an announcement of when it might be on so we know how to catch it?
Yeah, typically, what we've done, once it goes on, we put, the answer is yes. We put it on the link on the website, and we actually put it on the town Facebook page, and we'll put it on the very next broadcast news, but I'll try to get the word out as soon as possible that it's available.
Yeah, just so they know when to, yeah, that's good.
Thank you, manager. Town attorney?
Nothing for me, just thank you for letting me be with you, manager.
Pleasure to have you with us. Good turnout, unlike a, it's an off-year election, so turnout suffered a little bit. First of December, you all will be seeing two new faces appear at this, August dressing, Congratulations to Leo and to Tom Bennett. I look forward to the meeting, first meeting in December when they will be installed. I'll have some words to say at that meeting prior to the installation. I don't have anything else. Jody?
Oh, the only thing I wanted to mention is I saw your special newsletter today, Sheila, and I thank you, that was really, that was nice, very well done. Did you see it? The letter?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's all.
It's good work compared to what it used to be four years ago.
Yes.
I have nothing.
Nothing tonight?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Folks, I'm going to make a motion that we move, we go into closed session, and after we vote on that, we will be in recess, so you will have time to clear the room. Counsel, I move that we enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, decimal 11A3, to consult with the town attorney to, in a manner to protect the attorney-client privilege in North Carolina General Statutes 143-318-11A1, to approve some closed session minutes.
One second.
Hold this in favor, aye?
Aye.
We're in closed session and we're in recess.